President, we'll take Mr. Urban is pending, so we will see. So now we have public comment on the proposed ordinance that's amending the zoning map to rezone one parcel of property totaling forty-one point one seven acres in Newport Township. I have Stan Gar.
Yes, actually, my comment is on my cottage and I.
Okay. Okay, that was the only slip I have for this meeting. Any other members of the public that want to speak to this?
Second.
On favor? Public hearing is adjourned. We will move right into. All right, so it is six oh seven. We'll call the voting session to order. We already did the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. Can I have a roll comment for us?
Mr. Venus.
Present.
Mr. Lescavage.
Here.
Mr. Lombardo.
Here.
Ms. McDermott.
Here.
Mr. McGinley.
Present.
Mr. Mitchell.
There.
Mr. Perry.
Here.
Mr. Thornton.
Here.
Mr. Urban.
Here.
Mr. Lovovich.
Here.
Ms. Rado. All present.
Want to announce the executive session in the first seat?
Yes. Before this meeting, it was an executive session concerning personnel and legal issues.
Any doations from each agenda? Your motion to adopt the voting agenda?
I'll shoot the doc for a second, whatever.
For the person in a second, all favor?
Aye.
Extension proposed. Agenda is adopted. We now have public comment on voting session. Agenda items only. So I have Mr. Griffith.
My agenda item is. Agenda item is number one on the budget. The question that I have is, is in the ordinance, and I know this is kind of a past practice, but I'm curious to know why the millage is not put in there. And I know council, this is an adopted, this is an ordinance that's submitted by the manager. The millage should be put in there because council can adopt and amend an ordinance. So the, the ability for us to hide what the millage increase is going to be in this county, I think is not fair to the people in the county. We clearly, in that section two where it talks about funded debt to be blank mills, there should be a number in there. Council can clearly amend this ordinance. So there's no reason why the people are kept in the dark on what kind of tax increase or not we're going to get in by, on the introduction of the budget. The other question is, is there, there's not an ordinance for the position budget. According to the administration code, administrative code, there should be an ordinance for the position budget in section eight oh two of the administrative code. And I know Ms. House talked about this at length when she was on council, as well as myself, and I think maybe even a couple others who sit on this council currently, because there should be two ordinances presented at budget times, one for the regular budget and one for the position budget. Because the charter says that the, the manager will submit ordinances for the budgets for. There should be a position budget. I don't see any binders on the table. I know we used to get binders on council, but maybe we're not going to get binders tonight, but I asked for a copy of the budget. I didn't get it even after council adopted. Maybe I'll get a copy tomorrow. But the budget that I ran off today shows an eight, eight, eight million dollar increase in county revenue, eight million, a lot of money. I don't know if that's an accurate number until the budgets have to be presented, but the report that I ran shows eight, eight, almost eight and a half million in additional tax revenue. That's obscene. I don't think we've ever had a tax increase that high in this county. Eight percent is the highest that the charter will allow. This is eight and a half percent. I don't think that that's fair for the people to get that kind of an increase. I think there's a lot of places to stop this budget. I don't think it's an accurate document at all. And I, I clearly know that things go up. There's no question about it, but we have an inflation situation going on here. This budget is totally out of line. I hope council takes those due diligence and tells the managers, send another ordinance in for the position budget. So we do it, do it right once, at least in the last, since two thousand and twelve. We never had the opportunity to do it right. The administrative code was changed in twenty fourteen, and we haven't done it right since then either. Please make the manager do the thing the right way. Submit two ordinances and a position budget. The people should be able to see this document prior to coming here. We can't give public comment on something we know nothing about as public. That charter means something. That preamble means something. That's our constitution, and we need to follow it. People have a right to know what's in this document, and they should be, they should never be blindsided by anything that happens at these meetings. You don't like it when we do shock and awe as public, but we don't like it as the public to get shocked and awe to the administration. Thank you.
Members of the public?
Yeah.
Can we use the, there's a lot of noise coming.
Yeah, you can do that.
Great, thank you.
I just want to speak to the budget and, and basically the policy as far as not having it. That's why, you know, I'm here for the budget. You've guys see, I'm the shock and awe that he's talking. You guys know. One of them. Don't like to do it, but there's a few things that have really, you know, ticked me off as far as being a citizen of Luzerne County. And it started with the last manager, and it was with IT, and they didn't really do it as a business. I got really frustrated because they didn't put it out for bid. They didn't use a common sense or a business approach. And that's what I would like for the manager. That's why I was so wanted a new manager. We got a new manager. And we were hoping for some change and actually some better management where you would take into consideration, you know, the change of maybe, you know, making it better for the county employees, and it doesn't always mean raises or tax increases. The county manager said before, he represents over three hundred and thirty citizens. And just so you know, the median household income in Wolksberry is only thirty-eight thousand, which is twenty-nine thousand below the national average of sixty-seven. I lost two employees, and they were paid over fifty thousand dollars. And they took cuts in pay to come work for the county because the county has a lot to offer. The county has almost two months vacation. They have set schedules where my company does it, and they have health insurance that is just, you know, so much better than what my company can offer. I want better management. I want better, you know, you guys to help management and our, our boards and everybody as if it's your own family, it's your own money. And that's why I got upset, and that's why I always get upset. And I feel that like when we bought the voting, the poll, the, the sorting machine, we didn't do it the right way. Not that it was a sorting machine, we just didn't do it intelligently, and we passed it through and we wasted some tax bars. Here's money to bridge in pits, and I was upset with their thing. And then Mr. Lescavage, I think, and Brian Thornton stayed at us three hundred thousand. That's why I get upset. I get upset because we don't act responsibly. I know it's government, and we print as much money as government and elected officials. I think that's why citizens are so upset with establishment, is because you don't spend it like it would be our money. Again, we have a society that most people don't have the security of a government job. They don't have what I have, and that's why I'm here. I'm not here for any reason. You guys cannot give me a job or my family. My family's in North Carolina. I want nothing from you except for better government, and I don't see it. And that's why I get so upset. And I don't care about the last meeting. I still do what I have to do to help people. No big deal. But I do care about the citizens. I do care about finances. And when I see government waste, waste of time, waste of human resources, waste of money, I do get a little upset. So I, hopefully you could put a budget together, get it to the public, and put it on a back burner for another meeting, so you do it the right way. Thank you very much for giving me the extra time.
Any other members of the public? Looks like Mr. Raybo has his hand up on there.
Madam Chair, thank you. Thank you very much. I'm going to comment on the proposed introduction to the proposed budget. I concur with the controller with regards to the format. Everyone should know the format of how the, the budget should be presented by now. I mean, I understand the new council members, you know, haven't probably got acclimated to the budget format because this is their first budget. But the rest of you should know better by now and should have, you know, given a heads up to the county manager that or at least the office of law should have given him, the manager, a heads up on how the budget's to be presented. I think Mr. Swets could do that too. So I, I don't understand why there was no position budget given when in every presentation of the budget since two thousand and twelve, there was at least something, you know, separate that showed what was being presented in terms of salaries for the next year. Also, I'd like to add, Madam Chair, as far as the revenue side. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but don't you guys have like pools of money? Like everywhere, you have the ARPA money, you have the U-DAG money, you have other thing, accounts receivable that haven't been even looked at when I said it last year to the last council to look at for, money's owed from vendors to the county. I mean, I just don't understand what the, what the major malfunction is. If you're going to look at revenue, why are you looking at the lowest hanging fruit, which is to go after the homeowners of Luzerne County who are being taxed up the hilt already the way it is because they were paying down the debt? And as you know, Madam Chair, you, you and your predecessor reminded everyone of the four hundred sixty-five million dollars in debt that was left. So that was why we went to home rule, the county went to home rule, and why the, the expenses, the debt is paid first before any other expense. But now we're just looking at, oh, well, we need to worry about inflation. Well, here's the thing, it's not the federal government, where Luzerne County's not the federal government can print its money, print, print its way out of debt. So I think that's, that needs to be addressed as far as you need to take care of the revenue side where you can collect the, the revenue. What you're getting already and what you should be getting already as opposed to just bilking the taxpayers more and more and cutting expenses as, as the other two speakers have said. So, I mean, I hope you guys do your due diligence, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. Any other members of the public? All right, you can go to the podium. Just state your name and the municipality you reside in.
My name is Laura, and I'm from Wyoming with a citizens group called Panera, P-I-N-E-R-O.
Oh, sorry, you had non-agenda item listed on here. That's why I didn't call you.
I was going to speak about the budget as it pertains to our roads.
Okay, here, yeah, that was a time. Okay, you can speak now.
I'm with a group called Luzerne County Fix Our Roads. And on behalf of Luzerne County Fix Our Roads, we just wanted to enter comments. We have a slush fund, ARP loss revenue, three million from auction properties, and you're contemplating fifty million loan for a bridge. This all totals plenty of money to address drainage issues and properly replace and maintain our hundred and twenty plus miles of county road. If county manager's proposing a tax increase, can he provide areas of cost savings in his proposed budget? Lowering temperatures within all county buildings is the only thing we have heard. Office supplies, legal staff, engineering staff, getting the time clocks to work for all employees clocking in, these are just a few ideas. It's time to encourage a slimmed down county administration with fewer managerial positions to allow for proper functioning of departments. And getting the right employees allows for less management.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? We have hearing non, we're taking hands raised. I'm assuming either we'll move forward. We have a motion to move to the minute. This is December twenty-seventh, twenty-second. On favor? Opposed? Number one, we have the introduction of ordinance that's back in the twenty twenty-three fiscal year budget.
No moves, no. Another question. I, I think it's a good idea that we heed the advice of the county controller, Walter Griffith. He is an elected person of the county, and he is the controller, and if it's true indeed that later on at any point council could amend the budget in the interest of transparency for the public, for everybody in the county, it would be a sound idea tonight before we vote on this ordinance that county manager give us a figure of bills, either four and a half, five, five and a half, six. I've heard a lot of numbers floating around the past several days. I have no idea where we're at. That we can at least plug a number in there in the recommendation of Mr. Robertson. And therefore, I'd like to propose an amendment to the ordinance that we put a figure of village in there tonight.
First of all, this, this is a budget that's being submitted according to the charter. We don't vote on it. Manager submits it, and we don't vote on it, and hopefully we can amend something we're not going to vote on.
Without voting on the ordinance tonight?
By the charter, the manager submits the budget, and it's submitted. Doesn't require four votes like your bottom of the other ordinances.
So we're not voting on this for a first and a second, and there's no vote?
You don't even need a first or a second.
To speak on it, yes, it's a matter.
All right, well, as long as we're on the topic, then we don't need an amendment then because we're not going to vote on it. But I'd like, as long as we're discussing it, Mr. Robertson, do you have any village we could fill in there?
I'll, I'll provide you with it.
Could you do it tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
In, in hopefully ten minutes.
Oh, okay, great.
When you're ready.
Yeah.
Waiting on you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you can, you can go ahead and.
Counsel, ready?
Ready.
Well, thank you, counsel. I'm going to read from this. We sent the electrons, we, Mr. Swetson, his team an hour or two ago. You'll have it, and then the books have been prepared, and you have the electrons, and then we'll start the process, as I understand, Stern does, of next month and a half or two, taking a deep dive into it. And as a side note, I just want to thank the majority of you who came in and heard the staff present the budgets to you. Rather than this two-month process of this night, this night, this night. You heard from the people that work for you and the county. So it wasn't me in my three and a half months here, and that's why I thought it was important that you hear from people who've been here thirty and forty years. So honorable members of the Stern County Council attached to the proposed FY twenty-three budget. From the general fund revenue for FY twenty-three, it says, start with an introduction. Several months ago, when invited to interview for the county managed position, I provided you with a first hundred day action plan. I think all of you were here, except maybe Mr. Mitchell. Tonight, I offer the capstone product of that action plan, the proposed FY twenty-three budget. As your new county manager, I believe the proposal is an accurate, balanced, and clear representation of the opportunities and challenges facing the county. While I and every member of Team Luzerne acknowledge and agree that the goal is to minimize our reliance on taxes, as a professional manager, as a leader, my job is to mirror the realities that we mutually confront with those that I've seen in three and a half months. It's my obligation to convey the facts to you as I see, you can differ with. Since the inception of home rule, Luzerne County has annually had audited by professional outside auditors every year a review of their budgets. Each and all confirm that there are no excesses or slush fund accounts, or that term, several funds. It doesn't exist. The county uses largely unexecuted dollars from unfilled vacancies to pay for overtime to perform many of its missions and services. So if that is considered a slush fund, then I'll lead you to the terminology, but that's a true statement. The proposed tax rate, now contrary to conversation, proposed tax rate for twenty twenty-three includes a proposal of a six point seven five percent tax increase. This percentage increase equates to under eight million dollars in new revenue dollars. And for property owners, this equates to a fifty-five dollar increase for every one hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. And I, we picked that number because the assessor said that is the average price, the council, you'll have, it's all on paper. That's the average price of the property owners here in Luzerne County. From twenty eighteen to today, cumulatively, US inflation has grown by more than seventeen percent. In those same five years, Luzerne County taxes have only been increased one time by three point two five percent. That's from the Department of Labor. I propose that the administration encourages you to consider reinstituting the five dollar fee for registration for the, on cars, excuse me, for the exclusive purpose of underwriting replacement and or repair costs of major equipment and vehicles used by the road and bridge department. The cost of machinery and equipment has increased by nearly a million dollars, and newer replacement items are desperately needed. General fund expenses, operating costs have increased over three million dollars. Repairs for county-owned roads and bridges increased by eight hundred thousand dollars alone for FY twenty-three. And yet, as we all know, riding on them, Luzerne is unable to keep pace with the necessary repairs and or replacements we have to do in roads. This budget also reck, or proposed budget recognizes the council and residents' concerns that I've heard, that you've heard, for making improvements to increase safety and address stormwater issues along our roads. Proposal also includes approximately three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar increases for the correctional facility of the prison, primarily attributed to the cost of food. Personnel side, personnel costs for the union and management employees have increased a total of three million dollars. Increased wages include wages, overtime, accompanying taxes associated with the increases. Below, which you'll see in your packet, is an outline of them. The union increases equate to roughly seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. Overtime is at nine thirteen thousand dollars, nine hundred and thirteen thousand, and nine union is nine hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. Proposed budget also includes funding for a pay in proportion, a positional study that we discussed. Staff, a correction study, which we've discussed related to whether we expand or whether we move somewhere else for the prison. Increases in professional attorneys, both public defenders and district attorneys. And a few of the more critical building and ground deficiencies previously covered by the now nearly exhausted capital fund. And as a side note to that, I'm told the chiller on pin place is twenty-one years old. They don't make the parts for it anymore, and I think you've seen the byproducts of the elevators. Prison elevator, this elevator, and one in pin place. As an organization comprised of people serving people, this proposal is an investment in our most precious asset, and that is the team who serve the people. In these extraordinary times we face to attract and retain quality employees, this proposal enhances competitive capabilities and agility continuing that we desperately need. Continuing use of funds from vacant positions to pay for overtime due to personnel shortages. It is my opinion, it's a band-aid. We've been doing it for years. It's not right. I don't think you think it's right either. And it's a systemic organizational challenge that we feel is addressed in this proposal. Under the term right siding, I propose to cut twenty positions across all funds of the county. On debt service, Luzerne County continues to make exceptional progress towards eliminating the longstanding debt that's been acquired. Despite recent restricting of the debt payment, the county will be required to pay an increase of approximately three hundred thousand dollars new for debt service in twenty twenty-three. As reflected in this item called merit increases, providing county services consist of people serving people. A majority of the individuals in leadership positions within Luzerne County are not represented employees. They're largely the ones who help provide crucial services during the national COVID nightmare, and now in these extraordinary inflationary and competitive times. Propose to provide these individuals a two point five percent increase for all non-represented. Comparing counties, the tax right now, the sampling of Luzerne County millage rate across class three, class three counties were number three at six point one seven five. Is that, excuse me, six point one seven? That's correct, millage right now. We're point one six above Lackawanna County and about one point five percent below Burke County, and there's five other counties in here that seem to have comparable comparisons to when we were last assessed. So even with the proposed millage rate, Luzerne County will be at six point five eight six. That's your mill rate, sir. And still rank comparable. It will still be below the two that I've listed here and the two above it. Conclusion, to put this in context, is reflected with the average assessed value of a home in Luzerne County slightly under a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. This proposal equates to less than fifty-five dollars per year or less than five dollars a month. About the cost of a big pack. We believe this investment in repairing county roads and bridges, maintaining existing facilities, attracting and retaining trained and professional staff, and replacing broken, inadequate, or unsafe equipment is not only a desire, but an expectation of the county. And the other other thing that's not in here is I believe every day that I've been here, we monitored, we do have some great healthcare, good healthcare, and we have some great pensions, but on any given day, we have somewhere between a hundred and fifty to two hundred vacancies. The pension and the healthcare, while they're great, don't seem to have had much of an impact for years and years and years in moving the needle. So with that, Mr. Swetts, would you provide the hard copies? Is there any concluding comments that you think I should make, or you would like to make, Mr. Swetts, as you're the institutional knowledge here?
No, I think just the email packet you got today had the budget management. No, I think just the email packet you got today had the budget message, the position budget. The actual PDF of the budget and also the capital, and so everything that was required. This is just basically the three-page letter that you already have in the PDF, but it was just. So you have a hard copy. We have a book for Sharon and a book for our office, for manager's office. For anyone that doesn't have access to a computer in your public, like we've done in the past. But the thought was to use the electronic version and not print books to have a copy for Sharon's office and a copy for manager's office. And that's why we sent. But this is basically just a letter. I'm going to pass out three pages. That's it.
Thank you.
Just what's the reason why you're not playing hard copies to the council?
Well, you know, I talked to the manager about it. It was just, it's as you can tell, I have a copy of the book. You've seen it before. You're talking probably five hundred pieces of paper. We can't do it, but the intent is just to send it electronically.
I always thought it was very helpful. Trying to start going up and down some potential.
Any council members want the binder if you want to.
Be happy to do that. We thought we'd try something. We know we prepositioned them, but wanted to try to avoid killing trees, but if they're of use to you, absolutely. That's fine. It'll take a little time.
Minister.
Yes.
I would like to see council support the idea that we take the fifty-one million from the LSA money. To fix all the roads in Lucerne County. Not worry about the bridge for right now. That would be giving the money equally back to the whole county, I believe, for people that travel these roads. In addition to that, the three million we were going to earmark out of the ARP money. I say we use that money if we need it within the budget to balance the budget. Because that was lost revenue that ARP money really, people would benefit every taxpayer. Lucerne County would benefit from that. So rather than use the three million from the ARP for roads, which isn't going to fix a lot anyhow. I suggest we take the LSA fifty-one million, fix all the roads, get it over with, put an end to this, and use the three million if we need to to bridge the gap in the budget.
The only thing I'd offer, sir, is at least like whatever the body desires, we'll head that way. We didn't build, we can't build a budget based on the prediction of whether you'll want to push ARP money. So you understand. Yeah, we know it's out there. I just can't build a budget on that. That's a one-time opportunity. And Mr. Pleas is in the room. I think we would have extraordinary challenges in trying to execute. Tens of billions of dollars on roads all within a matter of a year or two, and I understand we're not just talking a year or two. I've got that. Now might be an artificial time in terms of cost, as you know, truly inflated. But it's just things, I know this is premature. Just wanted to address, you know, why we can't build a budget based on possibility of COVID money or other grant money and all of that.
I, I think this year we can, and then we look at next year. Yeah, no, we'll worry about next year when it comes to maybe the economy will turn. I don't know that. If I knew the answer to that, I'd play powerball. But I, I just think it's a great idea because of two reasons. Every single person in Lucerne County knows that they were promised a tax break with LSA money. Including me, I didn't receive one when the casinos came here. So I think it's time to give that money back to where it belongs to the people and fix the roads with it. Fifty-one million, and trust me when I tell you, you can spend that fifty-one million dollars in a year because it's not going to fix that many roads. I don't know if you think you're going to fix maybe a hundred roads, but it's.
About half. You have some numbers on that.
And it was right around fifty-one million, I think, the report that I see. So we can, in essence, take care of a real lot of problems, get rid of a lot of liability. It's, it's a thought. You know, I think it's time now when we're faced with something like this, we've got to think outside the box.
That chair. I just go throw my two cents in here because I haven't been talking to any division head or Mr. Robertson about anything with the budget. I, I was invited to one meeting at one-thirty in an afternoon. I had to work. I, I worked full-time. I couldn't be there. But I do want to say this. I'm not doubting that the county requires increases in different items and that our equipment needs to be repaired and other things. Whether that figure is eight million or six million or four million, I'm not sure because I haven't really examined things myself. However, I will say this. At this specific point in time. We're, we're entering in a world global recession. No doubt about it. And it's going to manifest itself. It's not in the next two months, definitely in the early part of next year. We're also faced with an excess of eight percent inflation consistently now every month for several months. That's not a transitory number, as was tried to, the administration in the White House tried to tell us early in the year. This is record inflation we haven't seen since nineteen eighty-two, forty years. This inflation is real. I get it. The county has to endure it too. Our administration has to endure inflation. However. My wife and I could probably handle it. Most people sitting around this room could probably handle it at this table. But there's a lot of people in Lucerne County right now that are struggling as the weather's getting colder. The cost of natural gas, especially oil, electricity is going up, up, up on these people. Many of them are on fixed incomes. In other words, that's a word everybody throws around, but if, as an advisor, I meet many bank customers, thousands of them over the years. All they did is social security. That's it. Their husbands are deceased. They get nine hundred a month, eleven hundred a month, or twelve hundred a month, fourteen thousand a year. That's it. And they got to pay for this electricity, this gas, this oil. They try to go to the grocery store. Their eighty-dollar bill is now a hundred and thirty from a few years ago. It may not sound like much to a lot of us, fifty-five dollars per average. But a lot of these older people might be in larger homes that are, it'll equate to a hundred dollars or a hundred and twenty. I think the worst time for, I know this, this is the economics one oh one at college. The worst time to assess a tax increase on anybody's people, this goes back five thousand years to the ancient Romans. When you have high inflation and you're entering a recession at the same time, which doesn't happen very commonly. It is disastrous for a governing body to impose a tax increase on the people. We will see record foreclosures. If not next year, the year after, absolutely. I'm not doubting we need some increases, but I agree with Mr. LaScavage. You've got to find another source of revenue to plug the holes. We can't, in my opinion, it's disastrous, irresponsible, and reckless by any of us to impose a tax increase this year. Maybe next year or the year after things get better, but not record inflation and a recession at the same time. I, I personally will not support a tax increase on the taxpayers in county. Thank you.
Just one more item, Mr. Robertson. I would love to see you reach out and look into that six million dollars in U-DAG. Fund that's been sitting there for ten years. That might be money that if it don't have to be turned back to the state, it could be used for anything else. And that would be a welcome package to the people here at Lucerne County if we can have our hands on that six million dollars. And if, if it's never going to come fruition, then we should turn it back and get it over.
I'm not blue with that. Mr. Sweat, are you in any position? It's the timely topic.
It's really Mr. Riley's. I'll come up in two seconds. I'm, I'm aware of U-DAG. I've heard it brought up before, but it's really a program related to Sterling, which Mr. Riley is better to talk about than me.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Man, I know it's tied to economic development.
Yeah.
So necessarily tied that and.
Yeah, rather than say something that's incorrect, Mr. Riley would definitely know more than me on that topic.
Don't have a lot of budget. Certain, I think some comments in my book.
And I want to, since you guys brought up different ideas, I just want to mention one idea. Mr. Lombardo brought up using ARPA money to send to maybe low-income or elderly residents. Who, you know, need a little boost. So I do think that if we, if we have to look at a tax increase, not six point seven five, but even a small tax increase. If it's going to be about fifty-five dollars per a hundred and thirty-two thousand on your home, if we were to send. You know, a stipend of ARPA money back, like that could be something we can explore too. So even if we do have to raise tax a little bit. Then maybe we're, you know, at least sending a statement to offset that, just something we can explore. So, anybody have any questions for Mr. Swets or Mr. Robertson on the introduction? You guys all have a budget schedule, so we'll follow that. We'll start today with the reserve with debt. Moving on to number two, we have a motion to adopt. Okay, motion to adopt resolution approving the recommendations of Digmenting Company Limited regarding security bond limits to protect Lucerne County against risk for loss of calendar year.
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Mr. Durbin.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Thor.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovett.
Yes.
Question passage, number three, motion to adopt ordinance amending Lucerne County zoning maps to rezone one parcel property to link forty-one point one seventy acres of new court township. From MI minus district zone to R two, two family residence.
Second one.
I think it was again, Leanne Lovett. Mr. LaScavage.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Miss Miss Durbin, yes. Mr. McGinnley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thor.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovett.
Yes.
Mr. Buzin.
Yes.
Yes. Question passage, we now have a public comment on non-essential items.
Yes, I'm Stan Grabachik, a resident of Mountain Top, and two items quickly. First of all, I want to thank, thank you, the county for repairing Kirby Avenue, which has been deplorable for some time. This week is being taken care of, and we really appreciate it. I live right off of that road, so I just wanted to compliment you on that. I do have a concern because there is drainage problem on that road. Which I did see they put rock in. They're actually paved, put down a first layer of pavement today and yesterday. And they did put drainage on one side, but there is a bank on that road where water runs off every time we get heavy rain and it takes. Brings down rock and water and winter that freezes, and this is a source of where, one of the areas where. You know, there are potholes begin with that runoff. So I don't know if they plan to do any more drainage repair on that road, but I just thought I'd voice my opinion on that. Because that seems to be a source of problems. Thank you.
Mr. Durbin. Sorry. Mr. Irvin, we'll get you next.
Sound the say, I'll be great. Really talk to you. You have to say great for you. My public comment on is the, in the budget, you'll notice there's no money for the Ethics Commission in there. I brought it up at several meetings of the Ethics Commission. We need money in that budget. When you guys are taking consideration of the budget, when you're making adjustments to the budget. Please put money in the budget for the Ethics Commission. For the last couple of years, we've been taking it out of the Office of Law's budget, which is not even the same division, let alone the same department. It defies all. Logic, accounting-wise, defies our charter. Charter doesn't allow you to take money from a different division, but we do it all the time. Ethics Commission's in Division Ten. Office of Law's Division Sixteen, but we take our money from the Office of Law's budget. Hence, the Office of Law's budget is really fat because he's got everybody's money in there. And he's getting account, he's, he's the person who's responsible for his budget. It's not fair to that department. We need to have an accurate budget for the Office of Law, so the bills are coming out of the right departments. So that way, we aren't saying, well, geez, the Office of Law's budget is going up, 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 up. It's not going up, 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 up. What's going up is he's paying everybody's bills. There's no accountability here. On the budget. So please take a look at that. The slush fund is exactly a slush fund, contrary to what the manager just told you. If we budgeted money for salaries and we take it out of there for something else, that's a slush fund. The budget is a budget, and it's supposed to be allocated for certain line items. We don't budget properly. We shouldn't take money from one line item to another line item because we didn't budget properly. And, and that it becomes a slush fund. We're going to make positions that we have no intentions of filling and using that money. To fill positions that, to fill expenses that we didn't need. Burke County is no comparison to this county. Anybody who's left this county, went through the tunnel and gone to Burke County. The median salary in Burke County is considerably higher than the people in this county. Yes, they're a third-class county. But to compare Burke County to Lucerne County is total nonsense. The, the people there are making six digits, most people that worked there and lived there. It's not comparison. To do a study of positions in this county, we just did that a couple of years ago. The county manager then gave everybody a big fat raise, and we did all these big increases. Now we're going to do it all again. It's not the salaries that's the problem in this county. We need to, we need to fix the problems. I think it's insulting to this council that you guys did not get a binder. It's insulting. You're part-time council members. You need to have that document in front of you. So as Mr. McGinnley said, how are you guys going to do a, a budget hearing every two weeks? Without that budget in front of you, are you going to bring your laptops with you? Are you going to print it out from home? Guys are part-time. You don't have access to a printer. That's insulting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Irvin. Mr. Griffin.
Members of council, Greg Griffin, Swarsville. Mister, it's, it's a difficult time. When you're discussing a tax increase, especially when. A lot of people in Lucerne County can't afford a tax increase. So it's a difficult decision for council. It's different, difficult decision for Mr. Robertson to propose it. And he, he equated the monthly cost of the tax increase to a Big Mac, a Big Mac, McDonald's. In my opinion, I equate the tax increase to a dinner at Ruth Chris's. The cost per month. And so if we're getting into like Big Macs or Whoppers or Ruth Chris or what's it going to cost per month? I say this because you got to put in the trickle-down effect. These massive corporations in Lucerne County, these big box buildings, you see them everywhere. The restaurants, Lowe's, Home Depot, they're going to get the tax increase. They're going to trickle it down into their bottom line, to the common folk here. And it's the end of the road for these citizens who cannot afford any more tax increases. So it's not the cost of a Big Mac. That simplifies it. The trickle-down is going to be too much to bear for a lot of senior citizens. Widows, their husbands have passed away, their own black lung pensions or whatnot. Council really has to encourage the manager and be a partner with the manager. Find new course, new, new sources of revenue. I've spoke about it, the assessor's office, the ghost properties. What properties have not been reassessed as far as improvements? There's new forms of. Revenue that we can't find out. We have to think outside the box. Mr. Robertson came from all over the world with all his qualifications, and he's very qualified. He, he can find new sources of revenue. I, I'm sure of it. So it's not the price of a, a Big Mac. If you vote yes. It's the price of a meal at Ruth Chris's. And if you want to do that. Just make sure it's, it's not simplified at fifty dollars a year. The trickle-down is going to be almost too much to bear for these senior citizens and working poor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. And the members of the public.
Again, Theodore Fitzgerald Wilkesberg, just going to reiterate the two. Being an owner of a business mortgage company for over twelve years now again, and a manager. Of a couple of different places, national companies. I realize as a manager, it's hard, and I understand owning a business, it's hard. It was, but I've never seen throwing money at a problem to fix it. It just makes the problem worse. problem worse, and you can't get rid of it. Once you increase something, you can't decrease it. So we are digging ourselves a hole if we have an increase in property within inflation. Very intelligent when you spoke. You are one hundred percent correct. What we need to do is figure out a way to cut costs at every level where we can, and that takes time, but we need to do that. We also need to maybe restructure the pension plan into an IRA, and maybe give people higher, you know, salaries, but less time off than fifty-some days. You can come, go out of the box, or maybe in the box, and find solutions that isn't just, you know, hurting the public. It is hurting the public. It is, it's expensive, and, uh, we, we got rid of the old manager to get a new manager that his resume is very good, and, and, and he's very intelligent. And I think that if we don't solve it where we can be efficient. My dad used to say, when I used to get a C on my report, or a B, or I used to bat three for four, and I'd be like, Dad, I gotta B or I gotta C, and he goes, he goes, great, he goes, how many, he goes, I go, I beat Joey, I beat Bobby, I beat Berks County, I beat Lackawanna County. He goes, well, how about Carving County? What about that county? So you're gonna compare yourself to losers? I do that in business. So when we're comparing ourselves to other counties, let's not compare ourselves to people that are failing. Let's look at the success stories, the people that aren't increasing taxes, the one that their services are amazing, that the morale for the employee, the sheriff, the guards, the people in, under the dome, that they're happy to come to work, and they're inviting their friends to come to work, to get jobs. That doesn't happen here. We have low morale, high turnover. We spoke one-on-one about it. Mr. Robertson said, would you work for thirty thousand over? No. So fix it. Hire this, get a bigger salary, figure a way to fix it without just throwing money at it. Money's not the reason that people work most of the time. People wanna have values. People wanna self-worth. So all I'm saying is, is that, listen, I just wish that you guys would analyze everything like I said before. That's why I get so upset. Take your due diligence, attack it like a business. I'll finish up real quick. Like a business, and make sure you're solving it correctly and not just the easy layout.
Thank you. Any other members of the public here? Okay, if not, I have two on Zoom. Scott Bussinger.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yep, just state the municipality you reside in.
I'm sorry, I can't. It's tough to hear you. Can you repeat that?
The municipality that you reside in.
I'm in Mountain Top.
Okay.
A couple of things, a couple of different subjects that have been touched upon here. First of all, about Kirby Avenue. I was the guy that brought it up last March. And to echo, I think, uh, the comments of Mr. Gurbak, if I got his name right, the drainage on that road has to be addressed, especially in the north side. And I'm available to meet the county engineer, Mr. Plesh, who I believe is here at any time, or really, I'm gonna be out of town, so, but I'm, I'm available to meet him tomorrow morning if you'd like. I'm early. But the road is at least getting fixed to a degree, but the drainage will be a problem, because that's part of the contributor to, uh, that got that road into its current condition. Second question was for the county manager. Um, you mentioned you're gonna be cutting twenty positions. Are these actual positions, or are they open wrecks?
Uh, Mr. Bussinger, if you could ask your comment, and then we'll answer questions.
If I could what now?
Finish your comment, and then we'll answer questions at the end.
Okay, well, that's one question I have. The other question, uh, actually, another question is, where can the public see this proposed budget?
It's posted online.
It's posted online on Luzerne County, Luzerne County site.
Yeah.
Okay. And that's all I had for now.
And the twenty positions are vacant. They're vacant positions. Thank you, Mr. Bussinger.
Yep.
Jess Morgan? You're muted? Oh, there you go.
Okay. I just wanted to, yes, I'm Jess Morgan, and I'm from Dallas. And, um, I just wanted to say that everyone so far, with the exception of TJ at one point, have been talking about ways of, of finding new sources of revenue. I would think that you'd wanna try to cut some of your expenses. I remember when some of you, a few years back, were wanting to get on the county council, you actually said during a debate, some of you, that you were gonna go line by line on the budget, and take a red pencil and cross out things that weren't needed. I think you better start doing that, because your elections are coming up again next year. And as Sting would say, we're watching you, every step you take and every move you make. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Any other members of the public? Okay, if not, I have some, I have for me not to get there. Mr. McGinnley, did you ask?
No, go ahead.
Let me give the public.
After your emails.
This is from Carol Rocker from Sweet Valley. I respectfully ask that this letter be read and submitted to the record on your October eleventh, twenty-three, two county meeting about the out-of-town. A lifelong resident of Luzerne County, and as such, I've been a long-time taxpayer, travel on many Pennsylvania highways for many years, have observed that some counties do a much better job maintaining their roads than others. The standard joke in my car is, well, you can tell me about Luzerne County. Whenever I come over into our county line, immediately hit rough road service. I'm positive it's no different in the majority of our county drivers' cars. We as citizens expect to deserve better from county council. I'm aware that Mr. Robertson has stated he has received over seven hundred complaints from citizens about the conditions of our roads in the last three months. We are tired of continued repairs for our cars, because the roads are not in good repair. Safety issues like having to drive down the middle of a two-way road to avoid the multiple potholes. Many of us have been concerned about the deplorable roads for years and have been anticipating the new county manager's work to make their priority. There are systemic problems in all of our county departments that need to be addressed, analyzed, and better organized. We create a environment that makes our roads the first priority in Luzerne County. Every councilman needs to get behind this cause, because the voters can and will make changes to the council in order to facilitate that. Departments must fill positions, make money, must make money available, and get bids awarded in timely manner to fix our roads. Many examples and pictures of our road issues have been sent, yet we saw very little happening. Personally, I drive to the works of Luzerne County often, and one of the best roads in the county, Lammara Road Lake Township, it was just solely paved, not patched, and retained, and requires for safety, although it is only one mile long, is the expectation of what every county road could be. With concerted effort by council, I've been hearing that the council is considering a tax hike for next year. To ensure more income for road fixes, but I must say, this is not the answer. Working in earnest on your budget is the answer. There is money that council has right now to address these issues. It's a matter of willingness that council do so. I implore you, all funds available, our grants, flush funds, et cetera. Mr. Griffin, please reformat budget items to make our roads a priority. Find the waste or the budget items that are frivolous and directed to road change. Mr. Robertson, please pay attention to what our citizenry is asking for. Mr. Plesh, lobby for better salary for your openings, so we have more able workers see a job sign. Company John Lardo has proposed ninety-six million dollars. If you have it, your clothes will be utilized in common sense manner. Please back his suggestions. Please do not waste, get to a million dollars out of bridge, the Anethoke West, the Anethoke Span, just to attract one company in Luzerne County. Use that money to benefit all residents, many roads and bridges. There is work to do, and the budget needs to be in line with our number one issue, safe roads for all citizens of Luzerne County. I trust you all follow what is truly best thing. Next one is from Valerie Lanning. Uh, as a citizen of Luzerne County, let me just say, in a period, if you have, you're considering raising taxes again to raise, to raises your employees, to raise your, my husband and I both work full-time. I myself have a master's degree, but add inflation due to increases in utilities and childcare costs, we barely have enough left over to make ends meet. You wonder why the county is aging. Anyone who can leave is leaving, including us, if things don't turn around in the near future. As you realize, the rest of the world isn't getting raised, and are seeing their insurance premium, right? The need to obtain funds from somewhere, maybe try looking at your county employees, and stop taxing the citizens to pay for big raises, to have them little contributions toward their healthcare. It's time county, state, federal employees have to sacrifice a little too. They can certainly afford to sacrifice bits, so the rest of us can get by. Next one's from Willis Goward from Wyoming. Please do not raise our taxes again. We have many seniors living in this county who cannot afford their utility bills nor food increases. I don't understand why the tax has to be increased. Where does our money go? The roads are in deplorable condition. When they are repaired, it's nothing more than daily surgery with the use of inferior products to repair. The roads of Luzerne County have always been at this rate, which everyone complains about, but nothing is ever done. I moved back to this area a few years ago from New Jersey, always commented on how while they kept the roads, especially compared to this area. I visited this area numerous times, because of family, and the roads have always been a dire need of repair. Then when I moved back, I of course traveled the road, and I understand that they're truly shameful. We also must do something to stop the drugs from coming into the area. If prices continue to rise, roads continue to be in poor condition, and drugs continue to take over Luzerne County, we consider why this song area or Valles of the Earth is not too far from that. Next is from Cindy Brandon, Wright Township. Uh, you're matter chair vice chairman of the council. There are numerous reports of fifty-plus million dollar loans being considered for wanting to bridges. This one will be primarily funded from the change law in twenty-twenty that gives the first three million dollars from the locally shared account to our county before monetary awards are given based on applications with over a hundred and twenty miles of county on the road. In a statement by our then acting county manager in twenty-twenty one, it will take fifty million dollars for proper legal repair. I'm asking that our council group, just to secure one loan for one community, for one or two bridges, whatever resident can benefit from securing the same loan for all of our roads, county-wise. Next one, Susan Finks, I'll give him out. It seems like you, the government of Luzerne County, can't understand how we, the people, can't afford an increase in tax, just because you are someone, can't get expenses for the county under control, with the cost of living always going up, a pay check that we do makes it very hard to live in this county. I would like to be able to take a nice vacation or go out of town for a little fun, the last thing in county taxes twenty-twenty. I want to know why it is, why it is the filling of real estate, Ethan Walls are part of the budget, that we, the people pay for these services directly to an attorney. When my mother passed away, I paid for the meat transfer and filing of the new deed in my name. Cut this expense out of the budget, and you won't have to raise taxes. The old fifty dollars might not seem like a lot, but to many of us, especially senior citizens, it is the difference between paying tax, losing your home medications, and food. Often, people will pay the tax rather than lose your home. They are forced to go without order their medications in order to pay the taxes. Maybe if you did require to build, we paid all at one time, allow for payment of the bill, and it wouldn't hurt so much. Please don't raise the tax, because the people are forced to pay it first. Almost last one. Uh, this is from Frank Pollidora, Butler Township. Ladies and gentlemen, there is confusion in the fifth voting district of Butler Township regarding which congressional district the voters are. The district is divided in, in irregular ways between the eighth and ninth congressional district. There is no map scale, the lineating which district one is in. Twenty-twenty U.S. census tract of blocks are used to determine this, but very confusing. I reside in the fifth voting district, census tract two-one-six-six point zero-two, block ten forty. I'm former the ninth congressional district, yet when I voted in the primary, made way to the candidate on the ballot, were those for the eighth congressional district. This probably has to do with the recent redistricting thing. Before, all of Butler Township was in the eighth congressional district. This year's primary and general elections are for new districts, including that part of Butler Township, that is the ninth. Luzerne County election board and election committee declared this up before the November eighth election. A map has to be provided to show which part of Butler Township is the ninth, and which is in the eighth, that has to be publicized, so that voters know in advance for whom they can vote, which congressional district they're in, most importantly, the ballot must see tracks of citizens that give a proper candidate. Last one, please do not raise our taxes again, senior citizens. I'm about, I'm about barred with price increases in everything from roof to utility. Have a hard, do not invest more than they are. There's not enough room under the bridges for us to lift. Any other members of the public?
I'm gonna make a comment before you go.
Scott, Mr. McGinnley?
I probably should have done this, at least two names. Human Services Agencies got together and had a conference agenda at Woodlands Back, probably a month and a half ago at this point, but it was still very good. Did a great job, a great turnout. I commend those people, all the human services staff. I really thought it was well-received by the public. Also, would like to comment about children and youth. I read the article today, paper. And yes, we do have issues. I also thought it was good that they acknowledged the fact that we are making strides to try to correct things, build the staff, et cetera. And I thought that was very good for the state to come in and acknowledge that, even though we know we have issues, and we know we have to address, keep addressing. But I thought it was very good that the state acknowledged that in their report. And finally, with the Ethics Commission, I agree with Mr. Griffin, the Ethics Commission does not have budgetary powers. So unless we assign a budget, they shouldn't be able to pay anybody or raise hours. That's, uh, you know, something that we have to do if we would like the Ethics Commission to function. And I think Charter requires that, so I think we have to make an effort to include it in our budget discussions. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to quickly recognize the, uh, the report. Uh, last week, several members of councils toured the arena, um, and it'll be twenty-fifth anniversary of it opening soon. Uh, we did meet their whole management team, very impressed by, uh, by the whole operation they have down there. We haven't been to a concert or a show or anything down there. Please, please get down, because they work very hard, and it's very impressive. So I just wanted to thank all of them really quick, particularly Donna, who's been, uh, for all our, related information.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to adjourn? On paper? Extension, the post, meeting adjourned at seven eleven. Uh, what sort of seven twenty?
Recording stopped.
Make sure the mics are on. John, I'll find dialing.
Yeah, whatever. Yeah, no problem.
Oh, Sharon, I'm stealing your pen.
This is ridiculous. I had several people tell me that somebody was gonna propose to go to no conference.
Well, you told me on the phone. I told you there was no action stick.
Well, you were the one who called for me.
I think you want to win.
I told you that, too. Did you get what you
Has your meeting been adjourned, guys?
Okay, man.
Yeah, I'm good.
How are you, sir? Are you, you, whatever, you gotta drink your water.
Yeah, oh, why? Do you need another? If you don't mind, yeah.
You do, you.
Yeah, you're not drinking.
I should be talking to you.
So I'm not, I just drink water.
Honestly, it's not bad.
No, that's good.
My dad is. Anything I do.
How are you, sir?
I'm okay. How are you?
It's no good.
My wife had surgery last week.
She's complaining. When the Colonel complains, Westlake's there unhappy. And it was one of those life changing terms.
Yeah, I know.
I can, I can.
And she's starting to swell up, you know, the whole leg.
Hopefully it gets better.
It will, it will. It's just gonna be painful.
Unfortunately, we have to go through it.
He drives the since I was, you know, I mean, since he
Oh, yeah, this is gonna happen. No. Yeah, that was financial. Yeah, finally. I've been asking the question for a month.
I mean, yeah, the state's up.
Most great.
But I wouldn't provide the services those kids are planning.
I always were, I always were.
Absolutely.
Are they all sort of?
No, no, I mean, I don't even care for surgery.
I'm not worried about you.
I could ever say. He does.
I could give credit where I'm going.
He knows more about all that stuff.
Today. At the end of the day. Going down to that same ward, sitting on a porch. Definitely has a problem.
Turn their mics on, please. It's seven twenty-two. I'd like to call this meeting order.
Recording in progress.
Present.
So let's gather.
Here.
Mr. Lombardo.
Here.
Dermot.
Here.
Mr. McGinley.
Present.
Mr. Mitchell.
Here.
Perry.
Here.
Randall was absent. Mr. Short was absent. Mr. Urban.
Here.
Mr. Levick.
Here.
Nine oh eleven.
Thank you. For additions and deletions to the work session agenda. I'd like to actually entertain a motion to add a brief management minute on Jeremy's boot update as number two. Mister Robinson requested, yeah.
Did you make the motion?
Yeah.
Second.
Call a table.
Hi.
Close. Thank you. Any other additions or deletions? Let's entertain a motion to adopt.
So move.
Second.
On favor? Close. Agenda is adopted. Okay. First, we have the booth update. Once.
Thank you, Mr. Amaro. Robin Booth has the link and will be walking through the presentation. All right, he also has it on screen. It's in your pocket. So Robin, you're up first.
Good evening, everyone. This is actually Marilyn Lockman. I'm the grants manager. Hi, no, that's okay, Brian. Unfortunately, Robin is on travel this week out of state. She was trying to make the meeting virtually this evening. If it is okay, I'd like to respectfully ask that I'm able to present on her behalf.
Please.
Okay. Wonderful. And so if you would, you know, in the interest of time, I certainly won't belabor many points. If we could just move forward, I'm gonna just say next slide, next slide. What I'd really like to draw to your attention today is sort of the evaluation panel information and how we could. Is there a way that I could advance this myself or, okay, good. Yep, I do believe that, yeah, so just very quickly, I'll talk to you about the two applications that were unable to move forward to phase two. That's going to be Rice Township Wyoming Host Company number one. And essentially, it was a failure to provide application materials. And so, you know, certainly we can follow up on any inquiries that you might have surrounding that. There was one additional application that came in after the deadline along the way. That brought the application total up to one forty-one. The two that were not able to move forward to phase two, we're now looking at one hundred and thirty-nine applicants. Next slide, please. Okay, so you all have already seen this information, but here it is. Obviously, this is going to move and change as eligibility is determined. I won't belabor the point. You already have access to this information in your packets. If you have any questions about that, you know, again, we're happy to respond to those. Next slide, please. Same thing, just looking at it differently, looking at it in terms of those ARPA, I'm sorry, buckets that were proposed. So again, the amount of funding requested by category information that you have in front of you. Next slide, please. And then this is, of course, the breakdown of the internal projects. Again, information that you already have. Next slide, please. Yep, once again, this is the updated council approved projects summary. We did insert the Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority, the two million dollars that was requested there. So as you see, the slide has been updated to reflect that. But again, this is information that you all had received last week as well, just with the Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority resolution that had been inadvertently left off in advance. So next slide, please. Okay, and again, this is just another summary of those proposed ARPA buckets that Robin presented on last week. Next slide, please. And so we'll go one more slide, and I want to talk a little bit sort of about, again, you know, where we are, the timeline and the processing timeline and evaluation timeline. You've seen it before. Initial screening has been completed. We are now in the midst of the eligibility, risk, and budget assessments. There will undoubtedly be projects that are not necessarily deemed eligible. Again, we're hoping that your evaluation panel can, you know, again, be that Luzerne County Manager's Office staff or the council staff, whoever forms that evaluation panel, can look and assess those applications between October twenty-fourth and the twenty-eighth. And then, of course, we'll have a notification of awards tentatively projecting that that can be late November after the holiday with a grant execution period opening for the entire month of December. Again, these are dates that are, you know, that they certainly can be changed. You all would just let us know. Can I have the next slide, please? This is where I really want to talk about the evaluation team in sort of what you guys want to think about as you're putting that team together. Of course, the evaluation team, the folks who live and work and play in Luzerne County are going to be making final determination. We do have an application scorecard that was included as an exhibit to the grant agreement. I'm sorry, not the ground agreement, the notice of funding opportunity. It was made available to applicants as sort of the baseline of what their applications would be judged on if their applications were eligible. We'll look at those very quickly on the next two slides. And so, you know, obviously, the evaluation team would be looking at the scorecard and using that in order to make determinations about funding. We're proposing to submit applications to the evaluation panel on a rolling basis so that you're not inundated with a group of applications at once, obviously. Worst case scenario being one hundred and thirty-nine applications plus those county internal projects, not the council-approved ones, which there were ten of those. Okay, and then also, if you'll let us know how you'd like to access the application files. Do you want those in paper format? Do you want those electronically? Again, no need to make a decision right now, but certainly something that you could follow up with the county manager's office and let us know. Next slide, please. Okay, oh, I do want to take a moment here just to talk about the guidance from the uniform guidance to CFR two hundred, which is the part of the regulation that provides guidance on how federal grants need to be administered. So just keeping in mind, as you're forming the evaluation panel, paying attention to this statute regarding conflicts of interest. The Federal Awarding Agency must establish conflict of interest policies for federal awards. The non-federal entity must disclose in writing, the non-federal entity here being the Luzerne County Evaluation Panel or Luzerne County essentially, right? Must disclose in writing any potential conflict of interest to the Federal Awarding Agency or pass-through entity in accordance with applicable Federal Awarding Agency policy. And so certainly a discussion that if you need additional guidance, we're happy to expound on that at a later time. We can even do it by email, but just wanting to make certain that any potential, you know, conflicts are disclosed as it relates to the evaluation panel. May I have the next slide, please? There's additional guidance on, you know, what essentially goes into determining the merit of the proposals. In the interest of time, you know, the regulation is there. Again, you all have the information in front of you, but essentially, this would be covered, the basis would be covered by the process that we've been undergoing, the eligibility determination, the risk analysis, the review, the detailed review of the budget against the regulation. And then, of course, using the evaluation scorecard really just does create a very transparent process for you all. May I have the next slide, please? The next, this slide and the very next are, in summary, the evaluation scorecard. So you actually have it right in front of you. Again, any questions that you all might have, we're happy to answer those. But this slide, and then if I could have the next slide, if you're wanting to know what that evaluation scorecard looks like as you're thinking about who that panel is going to be and and how these applications will be judged, you have everything in front of you. And if I could have the next slide, which I believe is the questions slide. If there are any questions, I will certainly do my best to answer those at this time.
Yes, I have a question about the buckets.
Okay.
All the buckets. Dean knows as eligible. Anything that's in one of those buckets, or is there any bucket that could possibly not be eligible?
Okay, I am, bear with me. I also have the slide in front of me. And so I am going to go back to those buckets so that I could, let me minimize my screen. Do bear with me. Thank you. I think I see someone moving the screen there as well as the screen. Okay. Right. Okay. And again, I do apologize. I know your time is precious this evening, and so as I'm trying to navigate.
You know, if you don't have that answer right now, that's fine.
Oh, no, I'm pretty, I'm sorry, I'm pretty certain that I do. I just want to make certain that I'm giving you the appropriate information and technology is not working cooperatively with me this evening. Okay, so I'm looking at slide number. It's page, it's slide number eight on my deck, so if you'd like to advance to that one. And so if I understand respectfully your question, you're saying, is there any possibility that these numbers could, these allocations for these proposed ARPA buckets could change? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I'm more concerned about the buckets themselves. Some of the projects are in different budget buckets. The buckets, all eligible kinds of programs, all the kind of projects.
Oh, I think that I understand correctly. So at this time, these categories in terms of approved council projects or, you know, applications that came in under the notice of funding opportunity, the internal projects. No, those things will not change. You know, what will change is, is we may determine that out of the notice of funding opportunity applications, that yes, there were some projects that were proposed that simply just will not be eligible and that would actually just free up more of the proposed money to go into, you know, either different buckets if you wanted to reallocate or there would just be more money available for other applicants that had taken a part of the competitive application process. I'm not certain if I've answered your question well. Have I?
That's fine. I appreciate the information. The other question I have is I know the legislation provides a vend date of the end of twenty The other question I have is, I know the legislation provides a end date of the end of twenty-four. I would like to see a end date for the projects earlier than December twenty-four. So that the project isn't going to be completed, it can't be completed, we will have time to address that. You know, we'll wait till the end of the year. You know, reallocate the money or make a change or whatever it might be. So my suggestion would be like June of twenty-four, or maybe September of twenty-four. So that we have some time to address if there's going to be a problem with the project being completed.
That's, that's actually, not only is it a very good idea, that's a very standard practice in grants management. And so we'll work with Brian and his team in order to, you know, ensure that we are developing a process that naturally builds indicators and checks. So that if a group or an entity that has been awarded dollars isn't burning that money down appropriately, we can look at reallocating it. So definitely something that we can continue to talk with the local team there about.
All right, thank you very much.
Wonderful, thank you very much. I hope you all have a very wonderful evening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. McGinley, we didn't rehearse it, but actually said some of the things I wanted to talk about tonight. But more importantly, have others talk to it, done it. I want to reach out to Ms. Andy's for giving the visibility to the county, that we did have a, we still have challenges. I mean, go on record to say it took years to get to this position, so it's going to take a long time to get fixed. But dealing with John Rubin and his staff, and Mr. Rubin is the senior guy in the state for child and youth services. And in our local district, we had a very promising report that I received late last week. And again, while it stresses that we still have a long road to go, it accentuates some of the positive things that had not been said at all up till now. So with that in mind, Ms. Hill couldn't join us tonight. I want Adam, her deputy or finance person, to come up and speak more globally to this. And more specifically, a couple of projects we're working on that have direct relation to the budgetary process. And then Ms. Fox will be accompanying to deal a little bit more detail as it relates to the mental health aspect of one of those projects. So, Adam, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Robertson. My name's Adam Wornes, I'm the fiscal director for the Human Services Division. And as Mr. Robertson mentioned, we have been working with the state, the Deputy Secretary for Children and Youth and Families, John Rubin, met with us approximately a month ago on, you know, what we have in process to discuss that. All the actions that we've taken, where we're at with hiring and our efforts there. So there was an article written that was in the newspaper today. It did mention the increases in staff salaries. I believe that you're aware of what took place this summer with the increased salaries through the new CBA for the union staff, which the majority of our staff is unionized. So we were able to increase those, and we've since seen, you know, somewhat of an uptick in hiring of caseworker staff. We were at fifty-eight vacancies at the high point this summer, I believe in June. And today, we are at forty-five caseworker vacancies. So, you know, as I said, there is some improvement there. We still have a long way to go, absolutely. You know, it's our belief that we, you know, have the staff in place now, the existing staff that are qualified to help continue to turn around the department. You know, the main issue right now really is the lack of staff in many of those vacant positions. We do have a vacancy in the department head, there's two deputy department head positions that are vacant. We currently have an acting department head and an acting deputy, and they're doing a fantastic job. But, you know, stability there would really help the situation. Caseworkers, like I mentioned, staff is picking up as much as they can, the existing staff. Supervisors are pitching in to help out, you know, it is costing us some overtime expenses to date fifty-one thousand, a little above fifty-one thousand, I believe, total in overtime for the year. We, you know, have increased our recruitment efforts, advertising, job fairs, more involvement with the colleges. The contracting out of services, we, you know, due to the decrease in staffing levels, if you want to call it that, we determined that, you know, there were some areas that we could contract out, particularly foster care casework services. We have engaged with a consultant who was the former deputy secretary for children, youth and families for Pennsylvania. Her name is Bev McRith, and, you know, she's really done a tremendous job of helping us out during participating in case reviews with our staff to let us know what deficiencies she's seeing and where else we could improve our processes and improve efficiency. Make sure I touch on everything here. She's also helped our relationship with the state, she does have many contacts yet with the governor's office and the Office of Children, Youth and Families. And I got to also, you know, I feel like I need to mention that our relationship with the state Office of Children, Youth and Families and locally, the Northeast Regional Office has improved over the past year. And, you know, all credit there goes to Lynn Hill, our acting administrator, Kelly Gahan, our acting deputy, Dave Gogler, and our former program director, John Looney, who has since left and gone to Wyman County to become the human services administrator there. I believe that's everything I wanted to mention. Tara does have some items to add, particularly one program that we're working on in conjunction with MHDS, Children and Youth, to provide more services in the schools.
And was there anything on the building we can talk, is it not right there?
Yeah, I can mention it. So through the course of the pandemic, and with some, with conversations with some other counties, you know, we sort of had to work remote a lot with our casework staff especially. They're the, they're the ones that are on the road seventy-five percent or more of the time. So what we determined was that those staff members could work remote. You know, perhaps in the morning would be their downtime where they're not at homes or schools necessarily. And they could prepare their paperwork from home and not have to come into the office. So we, it just so happens that our lease at the building that we house a great deal of our staff at for children and youth and some aging staff for the Asian Department, that lease expires at the end of this year. So we took the opportunity to say, you know, could we maybe consolidate our office space at one eleven North Penn, the two buildings that we have there? And, you know, after much review and deliberation, we determined that, yes, we can in fact do that and make it work. So we are beginning that process now to rehouse the staff that are in the rented facility, which will save two hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually in lease costs. And then there's additional costs that we may be able to realize savings in, such as security and parking, that would bring potential savings up to four hundred thousand dollars on annual.
And you revise that the council is responsible for real estate?
Yes, I do.
So that's something that would come to council. It's not a decision that could be made administratively, but not come to council.
Does anybody have any other children, youth questions, I guess, before I hand it over?
Adam, if I may, it sounds that we're heading in the right direction with trying to get some of these staffing concerns under control. Is that correct?
Yes.
And what did you say, how many vacancies currently?
So for the caseworker staff, we have forty-five.
And what was it, six months ago?
So in June, it was fifty-eight.
Okay, right, thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Tara Fox, Administrator for Mental Health and Developmental Services. One of the things I was asked to speak about tonight was that recognizing increased calling to children and youth via schools for truancy and other issues. We are working through our System of Care Grant, which is a federally funded grant, to coordinate with children and youth to create a teamed approach to these cases and assign a mental health caseworker to go out with children and youth to do these school assessments. And because it will be grant-funded, not MA-funded, that'll allow us that nobody has to be diagnosed with a mental health diagnosis so that we could help families at their core needs without having to label a child as having a mental health disorder. So if the family just needs parenting classes, if the family just needs any kind of support, we could then do that through this grant money. And then if this were to be successful, children and youth would look at their needs-based budget and have that figured into their state funding. So that's one of the areas that we're working to, you know, as our sister agency to support children and youth. We're also, one year out, we finished our first year of Juvenile Wellness Court, which is also helping our Juvenile Preparation Office and our Children's Office as well, trying to keep families intact and children, juveniles out of care and custody. I don't know if we had more specific questions about other issues, or if you wanted me to speak to other.
Well, just on the one that was in the paper recently.
Okay, we did make a decision to cease operation of our Supports Coordination Unit. That is a caseworker position, they are for people with intellectual disabilities. Caseworkers do not provide necessarily a program service, they are a conduit to services. So everyone who's currently active with our Supports Coordination Service, their programming. So if they go to a day program, if they have transportation, if they have residential services, whatever they have currently will continue. There will be absolutely no changes in any of those services. There, we have providers who are interested in taking over this service. Right now, we have four interested providers who want to take over the service within the county. And because it's consumer choice, consumers will make that choice as to whoever they want to go with. And they are also interested in hiring some of our, well, most of our staff. But staff will have the option to remain in the county, there are enough vacancies within the county that if they choose to remain with the county, they can do so. This will allow us. It's financially the best decision we can make right now. And that the money will then be in turn used towards services for individuals. You know, it won't necessarily help in the budget concerns like you were speaking of. But what it will do is be, that money spent will go directly to the programming of the individuals we serve. And again, I just want to clarify that on the ID side, which is intellectual disabilities, these are caseworkers. We are only one of twenty-two counties in Pennsylvania who currently house that service within the county. Mental health programming changed years ago, and like, so a similar service on the mental health side is called Blended Case Management. They have been outside the county and in private providers for, I've been in that, I used to be one in the private side, so well over twenty years. That's been a publicly provided service. Can I answer any que, because I know it's, I know mental health and I know this service. So to me, it's just like, blah, 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 here's what it is, you should misunderstand it. But you guys don't work it every day, so if you have questions that I could help explain it maybe better, like, I'd be happy to do so.
Did you say that we were one of twenty-two counties who do, who are currently doing this in-house?
Yes.
So the majority of counties are not doing.
Correct. And actually, Carbon Mineral Pike just did the same thing. And they were actually ODP, which is our oversight from the state. They use them as a, like a good example for us, so we're doing it exactly the way they did it. We're following their example as far as paperwork, contacting of people. So far, I could say at the administrative level, we've received no complaints. In fact, we have had a few families jump the gun and say, I already know who I want to provide this service, and we're doing that immediately. But we gave providers until this Thursday to contact us if they're interested in providing the service. Once we have that list, we're going to share it with all of our families. And then also have a in-person and virtual meet and greet, so families could actually talk to these new providers and make an educated decision. Yes.
Then we don't drop off the services provided to the families?
Absolutely not. There will be no funding or programming changes. And these new providers will be, will have to follow the same guidelines that our service coordinators currently do, because they're governed by the Office of Developmental Programming. So they have to be licensed just the same, and they have to follow all the same guidelines. They're held accountable to the same threshold that we were.
Any other questions?
Okay, and if, and if there are questions, because again, I feel like I kind of talked fast over, because I know it. If there are questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to us, happy to help.
All right, next we have discussion regarding the resolution requesting a multimodal transportation fund grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation.
A pretty straightforward grant, it's a PennDOT multimodal, we applied for at least once a year. Last time we applied, we received a grant for a section of West County from ninety-three to Trillough Mountain Road, which we're adding bike lanes and resurfacing. This is, we're going to finish the rest of the road from that road up until the state route, thirty thirteen, I believe it is, Rockman Road. So the entire road will have bike lanes if the grant is accepted. Any questions specifically?
So all of the road has bike lanes now, except for this part?
No, the section of it will have bike lanes. We look at this as being an attractive for PennDOT to say, okay, finish the road now with all bike lanes. That's what we're looking at. That's why we picked the rest of the section to finish, so it's not half-done.
Actually, a special regarding a resolution authorizing county manager to execute a lease agreement between Luzern County and Luzern County Domestic Relations.
I was going to speak to it if you want.
No, hey, I'm happy to, you know.
Our resident expert.
We work together, so it doesn't matter. So what you have before you, Paul Hymarsh, Court Administration. I'm here tonight with Attorney Lisa Prati, who's our Director of Domestic Relations. And what you have before you is a one-year lease for, between Luzern County and the Domestic Relations Office. Required now is an annual lease based on the true cost of ownership for the county. That true cost of ownership is determined by the cost allocation plan, which the county puts forth. In your agenda packet this evening, you'll see a breakdown of those costs. So what it comes to on a monthly basis is twenty thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents, or a little over two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars a year. Our existing lease expires twelve thirty-one of this year. And we're happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this.
What's the amount of money that we receive this year?
You're receiving, on a monthly basis, thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars. So it is a little over a sixteen thousand dollar decrease.
Sixteen thousand dollar decrease?
Monthly.
Monthly?
Yes.
Annually?
Annually. Yes.
That's a pretty big decrease.
Yes.
And you're saying it's based on the cost allocation?
It's based on the cost allocation plan, which I believe is done by a company, East Civis.
Outside of?
Outside of the county. The plan.
A chance to appeal that or do that in some manner?
We did review it, and we have coordinated with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. We did review it, and we have coordinated with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Human Services, who was in agreement with that. Those numbers that were contained in the cost allocation plan.
Well, personally, I find it very hard to believe that. The cost of them down to two hundred thousand dollars.
It's based on the true cost of ownership. So if there were no capital improvements.
Twenty thousand dollars is a big number. I really think that's, not in line with what currently seen. You know, the costs, your energy costs are going to grow up. Utility costs are going to go up. Already started to rise. Heating costs are probably fifteen to twenty percent. Electric costs is up thirty-eight percent. I don't know if those were factored in because.
I, I, I can't speak to the, the cost allocation plan itself. It was done outside the county, outside of our.
I understand.
Our purpose. We just need to abide by it.
Make a good case that, you know, our costs should be more in line with what's happening. And that's, I don't know how they do that, because obviously, this is the first time we're hearing about this new plan that they had.
I mean, last year's, last year's costs were based on the cost allocated by, I believe, the same company, correct?
That's even more reason why it should not be to decrease to two hundred thousand dollars.
My apologies, but I, I wouldn't be able to speak to the manner in which they obtained their numbers.
I would like to see as ill as if that's the proper word. See if indeed, these new costs have been incorporated.
Well, that, I believe that would have to be done outside of my purp. I don't contract with that company.
Yeah, but who would do that? State contract?
No, county.
Then county can appeal it for a contract. So maybe we should pursue that.
You, I mean, we did discuss it with the county and the Commonwealth. So, I mean, the Commonwealth is ultimately the one who's going to provide the reimbursement.
I understand that part, I understand, but I don't think anybody thought that we'd be in this position right now between the energy costs, between the heating costs, things that have happened. Besides, I suspect our insurance costs are going to go up also. So those are all building-related costs. I think, you know, we have a good case to.
Ms. Parodi?
Mr. McGinley, I think I can speak to some of the negotiations.
Why don't you go up there? So everybody can hear you.
I think I can speak to some of the negotiations that occurred between the state, the Bureau of Child Support Enforcement specifically, and East Simmons, and the county at the time that we were negotiating this. In previous years, there were costs that were allocated to domestic relations that should not have been. Number one, improvements on the heating and air conditioning system, improvements on the third floor, which we no longer occupy a part of since March of two thousand and twenty. We pay for seventy parking spots in the parcade that were specifically allocated for domestic relations, which now have been crossed off and negated, despite the fact that we still pay for them. There are a lot of charges that we were, we lost three parking spots down in the base of the Brabinsky Building. So we have taken away a lot of things out of what we previously paid for, hence, that's why the root, the cost went down.
I understand that part, the fact that we've lost some things, but I don't think they realize the cost of energy, utilities, et cetera, are definitely rising, rising very fast. Okay, we've taken some things away, but our utility costs, our heating costs, our insurance costs are all going to go up. So that should negate some of the things that we've taken away. I'm not saying it's two hundred thousand dollars, but maybe it's a hundred thousand dollars. I think we should, since we contracted with them, I think we have an obligation to go back to them and say, hey, you know, we're in a different situation now than we were three months ago. We would like to have a review in order to get the correct costs. I don't think that's too much to ask.
That wouldn't be my call, and that'd be the county's call.
I understand that, but I do think since we contract them, you can have that obligation. Mr. Swetts, we're contracting them.
We'll invite them to the next workshop. I don't know their availability. They can give you the detail. I walked through it, and what I saw was a quid pro quo. We lost at the time, eating and oil and all of that weren't at the scale of this that we're paying today, because it was a few months in arrears. That will be a continuing process, and I don't know if you'll ever capture that as a snapshot in time. But if that's what the body of the council desires, you can, I don't think, oh, I don't have to move forward on the next meeting, or could we do this workshop again?
We could certainly come back and discuss it again. Ultimately, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Yeah, that's, they're going to tell us what they're going to give.
Correct.
Yeah. But if we make it reasonable.
If you make it, or contractor makes a viable case, and the Commonwealth listens, you may be able to do something. So it's probably going up in the process, at least doesn't expire until twelve thirty. At least entertain a conversation, tie a lot of money as possible.
Do you have any concerns, Mr. Swetts? I mean, I don't know about reaching them to give them at a specific moment, but much like prison roof and others, we'll have the subject matter experts come in and say, this is why we did that.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Next, we have discussion regarding the resolution authorizing county manager to execute the sale of a parcel of county-owned property in Palma Township to Leonard Thomas. Any discussion on that? All right, now we'll move on. We have the budget item, retirement debt service and the reserve.
Thanks, Mr. Lombardo. In your pocket are the sheets. It's the same format that we've used in previous years for any repeat council member, for any new council members. It's kind of a snapshot. These are, well, large dollars. There's not many GL lines in these divisions. So in front of you, you have, I'll go in the order there on the sheet, with retirement first. The narrative says increased cost estimate based on where retirement plan is estimated to end twenty twenty-two. So what does that mean? Well, we all know what we're at. So we don't know if we're going to end the year ten percent down, fifteen percent down, twenty percent down. When we put together the budget, we try to give a best estimate to come back with good news. So our, our recommendation with the actuaries, this isn't just us, it's from a third party, is a million-dollar plan increase. The reason that's closer to seven hundred and fifty thousand is about seven hundred and fifty thousand, or seventy-five percent is general fund. If you remember seeing the payments before, there's actually a schedule. There's so much that children need, and so much that the agencies. So that's what we came up with, and the intent of any of these is to be conservative, so we can come back and say, that's worst case. So that, that's where we're at for retirement. Six point nine percent, again, general fund, it's a little bit over seven hundred and fifty thousand.
So you have a final number prior to December fifteenth?
Probably November fifteenth. I won't have anything tomorrow, but I'm hoping we'll have a good number by November fifteenth.
Thank you.
And at that time, we'll come back. The debt service, again, most of it's fixed. I think everyone here knows that the county, the county went from variable rate debt to fixed rate debt. There is a portion for the train that's variable rate. We always assume the same amount, and we'll, we'll actually be starting that negotiation now, and hoping that we can borrow last, the last few years. We have gone down from, I think, as high as eighteen million about six years ago to, I think, fourteen currently. If we can get that down to ten or twelve, and this is obviously money that we use at the end of the year before our tax bill comes in. You're aware, just like everyone else, every time they raise rates, it's great that they have a credit rating, but, you know, we've paid one point six five two years ago. I think four years ago, we paid point six nine percent, and we're looking at probably three and a half, four percent. So that's really the whole three hundred thousand right there. Our other debt is flat. We didn't add debt. It's fixed cost. If we can bring that down from fourteen million to twelve or ten, it won't, again, it won't be that high. It's just basically what I'll call a conservative estimate. And we got the three point five to three point seven five from PFM. They'll be at the next, not the budget-only meeting, the next regular council meeting. PFM will be here, the debt presentation. They do that every year, so they'll be here for us. And the reserve fund is basically, this is funds that are exactly that, reserve, so we allocate all the expenses. It always is an odd number, because during not only putting together the budget, but during any council changes, anything that doesn't get reallocated, we say we're not using a position, and it doesn't go to additional items, it obviously falls to reserve. So that, that is, was one point two million last year. If anyone remembers last year, most of that one point two million was LCTA and Hazelton, City of Hazelton for Hazleton Transit Authority. Just so council is aware, let me grab the note here. About nine hundred and eighty thousand, a little bit over nine hundred and eighty thousand is for the Hazelton Transit and LCTA estimate. So two years ago, we were going to pay that out of the general fund. During the budget process last year, I think it was Mr. Haas that moved it out of the general fund, so we're going to pay with the ARP funds. So right now, we have this over a million dollars in reserve. If council were to say, put this back into the general fund, that would almost wipe out your reserve, but then you'd be back on not relying on one-time revenue with the ARP funds. Because at some point, it's going to come back to general fund, and I get everyone's point. Maybe this isn't the year, and we can obviously work back and forth on that. But at some point, if we're going to pay the bill, and I think every time they do their presentation, we're about ten percent. So if we give them a million, they get about ten million from state funding, or if not more. So LCTA and Hazelton Transit are usually here. That's where we're at now, so a little bit over a million, not as much as last year. But if you were to put that, just, you know, not even go into any detail on anything else, just to pay, our, our portion would pretty much eliminate that reserve fund, but it's a discussion for later on in the process. That's really all we have for today. The other ones will have more lines, and we tend on having these sheets for the next divisions as we speak at the budget-only section next week. That's all I got.
Mr. Lombardo, I just would like to make a statement.
Sure.
I understand what Mr. Swetts, for us to do a budget properly, you can't use one-time money to cover expenses. Because what you do is create a hole going forward. This million dollars reserve, that's money that we took out of the, I think it was the first COVID funds. You know, gave us a one-year relief. Now we're faced again with a million-dollar general bill, or maybe a little bit more. And that's what happens when you go forward. A long reminder, council, there was a time when, you know, the county did not pay their pension requirements. We ended up having to make two payments. It was over eight million dollars. So I think it behooves council to make every effort to have a balanced budget that's supported by the revenue, and it's meant to balance to that. So that's, the budget process is maybe the most important process the council has. So I think it's something that we have to think about. I understand the conditions that we're in, and I think we should make every effort to cut the budget or reduce the budget, if that's the proper word, wherever we can. But be careful about using one-time money to cover a hole in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGinley. Any other comments?
Motion to adjourn. Oh, no.
Oh, no, we have a comment. Here we go. We'll move into public comments. Mr. Griffith?
Appreciate Mr. McGinley's comment about using one-time money. We all remember the homestead, when we took the money away for the homestead. We were, took five million dollars out, created a huge hole in the budget, and council had to absorb that. So I appreciate his comment regarding about taking money out. I think we should cut where you need to cut, where it's prudent, and make the reductions where we need to do them. But I agree, using one-time money as a last resort, maybe, but you certainly need to do the best you can to work with the money that you're getting every year, and save that one-time money for emergency situations that come up possibly. The other question or concern that I have is the codification. I know I've raised it before as a council member, have raised it some more. Under your work session, you need to seriously consider getting that done. We're already eight years past the due date. It's supposed to be done every two years. The council hasn't done it. And I know there's been a lot of burning issues that come up year after year after year, and it gets put aside. But I think it's something council really needs to consider. It's a violation of the charter. It needs to be done. And, you know, I know it's tough to figure out where the money's going to come from for those type of things. We also have a part-time position on this council that was approved two years ago. It hasn't been filled. So there's a lot of things that the council needs to get busy working on that I think are really important, that, you know, we can get the clerks some help that was necessary back in the day. I think it's still necessary today, so it's something council needs to look at. The codification is something that's really necessary, so thank you very much.
Mr. Raybo, I see you have your hand up.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. I have just one point to make with regards to the budget. And Mr. Heimars is there. I, several years ago, I pointed out about the court reimbursements for the budget. I know that the council members that have been there every year, hearing me about this around budget time. That's one of the examples I wanted to bring forward to council, especially to the new members, that, and I do believe one of the council members I spoke to suggested that they were going to talk to Senator Lisa Baker with regards to the court reimbursements to get an increase. So that way, that five point six percent increase from the state last year wasn't going to be a burden on our county budget for this year. Apparently, that fell on deaf ears. So I think now the county has to, once again, basically foot the bill for an increase that the state gave through a mandate, an unfunded mandate. And I don't think that's fair to the, to the property owners of Luzerne County. That should have been, that increase should have been built in to the state budget for years. And I would remind everybody to look at the nineteen ninety-six agreement that twenty percent of the court reimbursements have to come back to the county, which is ten million dollars on average, ten, twenty percent of ten million dollars is two million dollars. And the county has only been getting five hundred thousand dollars per year. And if I'm wrong, I hope Mr. Heimars can correct me on that, but I believe it's half a million dollars a year that the county's been getting. And I think it should have been one million dollars this year, especially with the five point sixing percent increase from last year, the highest in thirty years that the state put on the counties. So I would just remind all the council members to just remind Senator Lisa Baker that she should get the Appropriations Committee to pony up some more money to the counties for the court, for the court reimbursement. That's one way of getting money that's owed instead of going after the property owners. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. Any other members in the public?
Mr. adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Close. Meeting's dismissed. Thank you.